All right, then seeing no one, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. This evening it consists of six items, the minutes of the February 13th, 2017 special board meeting and the February 13th, 2017 regular board meeting. Item C, which is personnel appointments and adjustments. Item D, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Items E, donation from the RJ McElroy Trust. Item F, a donation from the Governor's STEM Advisory Council. And item G, the 2016-2017 Certified Budget Amendment Public Hearing. Can I get a motion to put those items on the table?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And are there any items that members wish to have removed?
C.
C as in Charlie?
C as in Charlie. He is an echo.
Okay. C-E-F. Anything? Great. So then, items B, D, and G are left on the consent agenda. Is that correct? Is that right with everyone? Great. Then all those who in favor of approval of those three items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to item C on page six.
I move the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
And a second?
Should move.
And discussion.
Yeah, two questions. One is declined offer. What is that in?
When we recommend a person for a position, we bring it to the board. And then they have a certain amount of time to accept the offer. This individual decided at the last minute not to. And because the board agenda is a public record, we need to have a paper trail to make sure that the individual is accounted for properly.
Okay, thank you. And then on retirements, I see we got a couple here. Do we have a feel yet for what it's looking like overall?
Actually, no. We'll be starting those conversations around staffing in the next few weeks. And we've started the chart of who might be leaving so we can kind of get a feel for where we may need to make cuts or if attrition will manage it as we have in the past.
Because isn't it almost a time where we interview and hire if we need to?
We're already doing that because there are always positions. So we're already meeting with candidates and talking about possible openings. But we don't know yet for sure where those positions will be. So, yeah.
And I would make a comment on that. One of the things that Bev and her crew did last year, I thought was really great. They had a team of principals who started interviewing, especially at the elementary level, because that's a little bit more general position. And so she had them interviewing and just finding a bank of people. And then we, once they had gone through this, you know, we kind of, we identified five, seven people that we thought, wow, these are really great people. And then it was just a matter of finding the right spot for them. But I really thought that was a great thing, and I'm sure that we will do that. It's just a, it's a teeny bit early, but not March is really go time and April for sure, but March is, is.
So we, should we go ahead and make commitments, actually hire some people before we actually have the retirement documents?
Soft commitments. Soft commitments. Absolutely. The teacher job fair is just, that season is just starting. In fact, we just sent the first team out this past week. They'll be coming home tonight from the first set of job fairs. And then it'll, you know, Illinois and it's Minnesota and then Iowa. So, and they come back with, with good possibilities. They do some interviewing onsite, do soft offers, and then when we come back, we'll see who we've got and where the projected needs are, start matching positions.
Okay, thank you.
And then Bev, I did have a question on that. As far as, I know a lot of people ask questions about the coaching. And I just noticed here that it looked like under the coaching that Timothy Barti resigned from the assistant boys track and took the head boys track. But the replacement for him as assistant, and this is at Carver, assistant track coach makes $400 more than the head coach.
So is that based on seniority or how is that based?
I can look into it, but it's typically based on experience. There are salary schedules on, at the websites. You can probably look and see where they are. I can look into it to make, to see.
Isn't it a percentage of the base?
It's percentage of the base. And that's all on the website. Because all of our schedules are there and you can see.
So these individuals are both already employed by the district? They're not outside the district?
No.
Got it. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any further questions then on personnel appointments and adjustments? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approval of item C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The next item then is item E on page 19.
I move the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges this donation in the amount of $5,950 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 2016-17 school year.
Thanks, Lyle. And a second?
Second.
And discussion.
My question here was, how's this allocated? Is it equal among all these schools or is there some process to determine match schools with more need?
Right. I believe, I'm pretty sure that these are, this is the $1,000 that they have in their, like a general account. And so then when they're depleted, they get refilled. And so as schools, some of them, I know that at least earlier this year, we did refill some of them before that. So it just kind of depends on when their money is used up. And so then they can ask, they can request for that to be refilled.
So this is a supplementary funding source for that program?
It is. It's for emergency funds. So for example, let's say that there was a child who was struggling, the parents were struggling with eyeglasses or something. And so this, this could be used for emergency purposes that would be, you know, a variety of things. The list would be quite long. So I remember that specifically from when I was the principal at Bungar, that emergency and how, how we use that.
So what's the primary funding source?
What do you mean the primary funding source?
If, if we didn't get this money, would the program exist?
We would, we would probably have to find other ways. There are other organizations that support, but I mean, this is like an additional money that we just, it's.
It's not a line item?
Yeah, do you want to, go ahead.
Yes, one of the things that the RJ McElroy Trust does, and it's for retention purposes, for, for K to 12, when you, when you look at some of the primary reasons for students to stop out of school. Again, feedback.
There's echo.
Yeah, there's echo. When you look at some of the main reasons that K to 12 students stop out, or some of the environmental stressors that K to 12 students have to deal with, what this fund does is to help them, as identified by primarily the guidance counselors. At the post-secondary level, they help with retention as well. So it's, it's for emergency purposes.
But it's not a general fund line item?
I don't, it's not general fund. And your question was where would, what would we do? It's not a program. It's really just extra assistance for individual kids and the school is kind of the conduit for that.
Something like donation.
Right. They're just don't, yep.
It's like a petty fund that they use for those emergencies. So, and it's, and it's designated, and I don't think anybody ever requested it. It's just that the trust really thought that that was a need. So like, I know for instance, if a family couldn't take care of like a head lice issue and they needed some assistance with that, the family support worker could, could use those funds to go and help the family take care of that.
So it's funded totally by donations?
It's funded totally by donations from the RJ McElroy Trust.
McElroy. It's all from McElroy.
Oh, that's only, okay.
McElroy replenishes that money and as soon as the $1,000 is up, a building can request to have their money.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And McElroy does a great job of tracking this. I mean, they do, whenever that money is spent, it has to be allocated in proper way. It's got to be documented. It goes back to the trust for them to review. So it really is a pretty open and transparent process.
And she has, I think, quarterly meetings. So Stacy, who is the, Stacy Van Gorp, who is the executive director, I know that she has like quarterly meetings with the guidance staff and family support workers so that they can ask questions like, can this money be used for this or can it be used for that? Like clarifying how it can be used. So there are stipulations on how it can and cannot be used.
And there are some years that a school might go through their $1,000 in a short amount of time. And then there are some schools that it would take them all year and they still have money left in that account. So it really is just a, an amazing benefit that McElroy Trust does for us.
Thank you.
And I just happen to know a lot of anecdotal evidence of the positive difference that the McElroy Trust has done to help students K through 12, higher, really stay in school and persist. So I'm very appreciative, especially in these times when, you know, federal funds and state funds are cut, to have the McElroy Trust come in and help our students is, is, is a big, yes, is pretty awesome. So thank you to the McElroy Trust, RJ McElroy Trust.
Thanks, Rhonda.
And they have been helping Waterloo schools and Waterloo school graduates for years. Because I got a scholarship back many years ago to go to college.
Do you want to give a specific day?
Yeah, you're not. Five years ago.
I was going to say, I got, yeah, and two years ago, I got this, I got a scholarship from McElroy as well.
Mine was six months.
All right. I see we've, after the flag situation, I'm losing control. Oh my. All right. Are there any further questions then on the donation from RJ McElroy? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving item E, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to item F, which is on page 20.
I move the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges the donation in the amount of $3,500 from the Governor's STEM Advisory Council for the purchase of Chromebooks to be used in the implementation of the Code Studio curriculum at Highland Education.
It should be elementary. Yeah. We'll amend that. So, at Highland Elementary. And is there a second? And discussion? I will say that this, we received an email, all of us as board members, from her about this different, this project. So I don't know, there is some background there too, if anybody wants to look it up.
My question is, is this just the Chromebooks or is it the software, the Code Studio curriculum as well? Do we know?
I thought that her, the information that she sent to the board was that they were actually buying the code curriculum. And that we were one of the fewer, I don't think there are very many districts in the state who have it.
That's my, my question, I guess surrounded, and I don't know anything about this curriculum, but is it, I'm assuming the STEM Advisory Council is the one that chose this particular one? And I'm wondering if, if it's the same one we would have chosen? Does it, does it, how well does it fit into our curriculum?
If I can answer that, you know, this is an enrichment opportunity for our students. And so it's, it's not our foundational curriculum regarding the STEM outreach we're doing at the elementary level. But it's, it's integrated through the media specialist. And Ms. Roster took that initiative. So, you know, it's, it's again, providing those multiple opportunities for our students that bounces from our foundational curriculum and approaches in science. So I would say that it's again, enrichment opportunity, that I love the fact that we're, we're integrating science and literacy because we know that that's such a key element to our young people being global citizens and having opportunities. So I'm real excited at Highland's initiative on this. And Ms. Roster's initiative.
Okay, thank you.
And as I understand it, they had to apply for this. It wasn't, you know, they went out and stopped the funding for it, so.
We got our elementary's already done this too, right? This is not new for us.
I believe Lowell also did a similar, well, I was going to say last year, but it's all starting to blur for me.
It was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
It might not have been this, this Code Studio curriculum, which has this little, it's a little guy that has a name, I think, I'm looking, Blockley. He's cute. But I don't know if it was that exact same coding, but, because we did it here at the board table.
We. It is all coming back to me now. This is my first year here and we did a, and it was Lowell and it was a coding demonstration. It was outstanding.
It was cool.
So I'm assuming the STEM Advisory Council has, you know, done due diligence and, and selected a good program. But, but then it's somebody in our organization apparently decided, yes, this fits internally as well, right? I mean, we don't just accept any curriculum.
Well, correct. I mean, you know, Ms. Roster certainly did it and working with Ms. Hewitt, who was our STEM coordinator, certainly would put forward something that would be within line with our curriculum direction and our vision. But as just like the coding example that I'm happy to remember now, you know, there's, there's an opportunity for innovation, right? And exploration and professionalism. And I think that's what we're seeing in this type of grant. And it was a highly competitive grant. So I'm really excited at our professionalism in this, in this situation.
The other thing too, we could add, Dr. McIlte, actually several of us, if you look on the board policies on 701.9, I don't know if you want to write that down, 701.9E2, and it is the, there is the Gifts and Funding Guideline Checklist. And so there's that flow chart, that is a beautiful flow chart. It says, have you received approval, a principal or administrator approval? Yes. And then it goes into, is it part of the curriculum? Has it been approved? You have to have Technology Department approve that it, it fits with our technology software. You have to have Curriculum look at it. And so we actually added that because of exactly what you said. Sometimes people were soliciting something that didn't necessarily connect. And then we ended up with this and we had to either send it back or whatever. And so now this, this policy is really pretty tight. Matter of fact, there's a part in here that if you answer no, it says, stop, do not pursue this funding. You know, so it's pretty clear for funding.
So, so what's our evaluation procedures? I mean, coding is, you know, the three Rs plus coding now. It really has that level of importance, I think. So are we, you know, what would cause us to expand this or on our own or decide whether or not to?
You know, I think part of this is, is, you know, that enrichment opportunity. And what we'll find is, as we're providing more enrichment for our students versus skill remediation, we should see part of the evaluation will be better results in our assessment. Because we all know that you can't, you can't intervene your way to excellence. Excellence occurs from building from foundation. And it is difficult, and I'd be upfront, it is difficult to individually evaluate this software system, but you would want to look at it, the larger picture of literacy and science mixed within the curriculum and how each school adapts. I'll be upfront, if, if we see great outcomes from Highland, we have a great elementary, high school principal team, I mean, elementary principal team who collaborate and share and share their school improvement plans with each other. We're about modeling what is exemplars now. And so if this takes fire, I can guarantee you that the rest of the elementary schools will move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I actually emailed her, Lyle, and asked her, once these were purchased, I said I'd really be interested in either coming to see them in action. And she said that would be great. So I think maybe we could either go or have her come here to us. So, to demonstrate them.
The main thing I would just add is to introduce them to the concept of coding and to, to mitigate that fear of math or science or just anything STEM by letting them see how much fun coding is and how relatively easy it is to do in, in a tactile, hands-on way. And so the Blockley concept is, is a lot of fun. They also do coding things with little animal parts that you can, well, not actual animal parts, but the, like the blocks, the Legos almost. Right. And so I think if you got an opportunity to see it, you would like it, especially for someone such as yourself who's a STEM person. I really think you should, you know, take a look at it. And I'm, so I'm glad that we're introducing it to our young people.
What grade would this be directed toward then?
I will have to check on that. I'm thinking early elementary. But I'll get back to you.
She had, it's in there. I think it was K-5. I thought that there were different pieces of it that could be, all the way from little, little ones, actually moving stuff to actual keyboards.
So the Chromebooks would, this group of 20 books would be used in different classrooms at different times with different situations?
I believe it's going to be through the media center.
And they have rotations, right? That they come to the media center.
During the specialist time.
So all the students will get the opportunity to use it?
Yes.
And this is only one of six schools that got it.
Yeah.
So I think we should be very.
So I don't know where we are in general on coding in the curriculum, but, you know, it's something we really need to, I think, focus on because it's, it's, it's becoming fundamental in almost all jobs, as well as teaching logic.
Well, and it is in, and I'm not saying this for your benefit, but it is in the Iowa Core, so. I'm just, I'm just saying it's there. So it's in the, the Technology Literacy Standards, which are part of the 21st Century Skills. So it is actually standards and benchmarks that drive our, our curriculum, so, drive our instruction anyway.
The Iowa Core's not so bad.
It's not. That was for you, Lyle.
Thank you. Duly noted.
One, one. All right. Anything else then? Awesome. Then all those in favor of approving the donation for the Governor's STEM Advisory Council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That concludes our consent agenda items. That will take us then on to item H on page 26, which is the Promise of Iowa Public Education Campaign. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the resolution of support Promise of Iowa Public Education Campaign.
Should move.
And a second?
Second.
And for our viewers out there, most of us up here were able to have a little preview of this campaign in November when we attended the Iowa Association of School Boards Convention. They presented this at one of our opening sessions to just talk about how important public education is to the state of Iowa. And then I know when Dr. Lindeman and Sue and I were down in Des Moines last week, we talked about it again, just how important that is in the current political climate that we have. And so I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for further comment, but you all can read the, I'm not going to take time to, but you can see this, there is a pretty long proclamation just for us as a board. And there are already over, I believe it's over 220 school boards across the state that have supported this. So it's clearly a pretty large initiative, so.
Yeah, I think the only comment I would make is that when you look at the numbers, when they talk about the promise of Iowa, we're talking, they're talking about 93% of all of Iowa's kids. There are shy about a half of a million students in Iowa and 93% of them are educated in public education. So when you talk about the masses and the critical mass of students who need to be successful in order for democracy and economy to, to happen, it really is Iowa's promise. And so if our students get a good education and they become our next generation of workers, it, it matters. I mean, it's, we're talking about the sustainability of our economy and, and of our, our democracy as a whole. And so they've, this is, this is a bipartisan campaign. It is not a partisan campaign. It is truly talking about the importance of our, our children and the importance of public education and what it does for our, for our state. And so I believe there, I think you said 200 and some, but the, the campaign really is to get every school board to endorse and say, we want you to recognize that public education is extremely important. And I just, I'm, obviously I'm like Shanley, I'm not going to read this whole thing, but the one statement, I think it says that, that second, whereas we believe funding a strong system of public education is the best investment Iowans can make to strengthen our economy, create thriving communities and improve the quality of life for every Iowan. And so I think the rest of them go on and delineate that a little bit further, but I think that, that makes it pretty clear.
The last paragraph refers to the 480,000 students. So I assume that this is K-12.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
This resolution is identical for all the districts?
It is.
Okay.
Exactly. So. And, you know, the other thing, I just want to echo myself personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable sitting on the Board of Education if I didn't support the very system that I'm, I'm here to, to work with and to advocate for and to create policy for. So, you know, it definitely is something that is important to me as an individual board member to be supportive of public education in Iowa. I think it's critical for the success of our state, so.
And I, I think with the, the political lay of the land right now, I know that there have been, there have been a lot of conversations about vouchers, otherwise known as ESAs or educational savings accounts. And the, the one thing, this is not about those. It's not about private schools. It's not, it's saying that we know that pri, that public education is, is critical because that's where the majority of, of kids are. And so 93% of kids is, is a lot. That's a lot of students. And so that's, that's why this is coming forward at this time, just making a strong statement. It's kind of stating the obvious.
And on the flip side of that, we want it to be made important that we are not against private schools or homeschooling, but the majority of the students in the state of Iowa for all consciousness have the opportunity to go to public school. And that's what we're in support of. We're not against any other type of schooling, but we are in support of public schools.
So anything further? All right. Then all those in favor of approving item H, the Promise of Iowa Public Education Campaign, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. It takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item I on page 30. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of Envision Architecture and award the bid to D.W. Zinser of Waldorf, Iowa, or Walford, Iowa, for the base of $269,400 for the Old Orange Elementary Demolition Project as presented. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike. And discussion? You all can see, I know Michael Coughlin can answer questions. Mike and Lyle and I all sit on facilities and we met last week after bids were opened. And I just want to start by saying I was delighted that we had eight bids. It's obviously a competitive market for, for the timing that we were able to, to put this out, but I was very happy to see that we had eight bids and that we were able to get such a, what I think is a really fair bid. I'm really delighted by that, so.
I, I echo that comment because often we've had one or two bids. So this was really encouraging to have multiple bids. I thought it was quite interesting, the range of the bids was, was just, how can, in a project that seems so equal, how it can have such varying bids? But I'm sure glad we got some low ones.
Have we, has this, the low bid, have they done any demolition?
They have actually. Two current, did they do?
Logan.
Logan and Old Irving? Is that correct?
I know Logan was one of them.
Lincoln, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we do have.
Logan, they did a job with Logan, and it looks.
They are known and we've had good experience with them, so.
Yeah, but it does speak to the, the process of the bidding when you get the sheer number of bids, as you said, and then especially when you get some, some pretty competitive numbers, so.
Have any other feedback on the building? I, I've seen some stuff floating out on social media about, about Orange coming down. I don't know if anybody's seen anything else about that? You know, there's some.
Are you reading Shanley's Facebook again?
Do you know that I drive by there five times a day? Just kidding. No.
No, I think it's, I can't remember which, one, one of the site, websites, one of those sites had something, there were some people commenting about it, so.
Okay, all right. Well, it's coming down, so.
I want to support it, so.
Yeah.
Is there anything, I know they have a very strong graduate base from that as when it was a high school. Are they doing anything with bricks or flooring or anything as a fundraiser that we're aware of?
I don't think as a fundraiser, but I did ask Marty Metcalf in our meeting about that, and Tara may know more, but they, we are going to try to save as much, we are going to do bricks, we are going to save the, the plinth blocks in the corners that have the, if we can, they're going to try to salvage some of that stuff. So Tara, excuse me.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to interject, based on Jessie's reference, there is a social media thread going on, on the Old Orange Alumni Page on Facebook, and they are talking about saving or taking away a keepsake. And Marty Metcalf has referenced as promising that each individual could get a brick.
Yes.
And some of the other things that people have requested, they were not able to salvage. So we just want everyone to know that if they would like a brick, that's something that Marty has promised could be made available. So that's probably what you're referring to.
Actually, it was a different one, but.
Oh, okay. Okay. So that's kind of the landing spot for people who are interested in taking any piece of memorabilia.
I'll send them all to my father, who is an Orange grad, and we'll, we'll get it all organized, so.
One of the funniest ones that we got was somebody, evidently on the backside of the building, there was a little thing that said something about bus, bus lineup or something here. And, and I got a call from a retired teacher who had worked there for, you know, 40 years, and she said, every day I stood out in front of that sign, I just want the sign. And so we were able to go out and meet, Marty met her out there, and, and that was really, so it's, you know, it depends on what's important to them, but I thought that was just a funny thing, and it just said something about bus line or something like. She really wanted that, and we got it for her.
And I, I just think that goes to show like the pride in the schools that we have, and I hope that our students that we have now have not lost that. I'm having a 15-year-old who doesn't want to go to track practice because it's too much work. It's like, take some pride in what it is that you're doing. I know that when Logan was coming down, my sister lived at my house, and do you know how many times we had to walk past there and look at the progress? And that she would Snapchat her friends to show them like what was going on, the ones who live out of town now. I mean, so it's just pride in, in the school that you went to, that, there's nothing wrong with being like, oh, that's a sad thing. I was sad when Western Media turned into an elementary school, but at the same time, it's just the progress of moving our schools in the direction we needed to go.
And it's kind of a safety hazard right now because they, you know, they've taken out all the asbestos away. Everything is open. So if you want an asbestos keepsake, you're, you're unlucky, you're too late.
And we should note that some things were taken when the new Orange, the, the old sign, that was moved and put into the lobby at the, at the new Orange. I mean, you can see it's where it was taken off of the, it almost looks like a headstone that's been removed. So I do know that we're going to try to save as much of the stuff for old time's sake as we can, so. Is there anything further? Great. Then all those in favor of approving item I, the Old Orange Elementary Demolition Project bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
What will be the schedule for this? Would this be as soon as school is out, or could it happen immediately?
Yeah, it's, are you, are you reading that? Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get.
That's okay. I thought we were starting right away, it would be by, by March.
The comment that I heard was the absolute deadline is August 1st, but we expect it to be done way before that, maybe by the time school is out.
There's nothing there that would prohibit it being done during school.
Well, and I just would be a little concerned about it happening during the summer. Hopefully it gets taken care of before.
Kids are out.
Kids are out this summer, so. And then that property will be, uh, become City of Waterloo's property to do with as they will.
It's actually already their property, as I understand it. The, this is just fulfilling the rest of our obligation to, the mitigation of taking down the building.
And if the public does notice, we are again following what we said, that we would get these buildings down, and this is what, two, three years out? So a lot quicker than some of the other buildings, and, and so I think we are being faithful to what we promised the public.
And we do definitely know that we still have some work to do. So we're still working on buildings that we know either need to come down or be sold, so, for sure. Great. All right. Then we'll continue on to the next item on our agenda, which is item J on page, uh, item J on page 33. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the appearance at the School Budget Review Committee to request modified allowable growth of $579,148 for the costs associated with environmental projects, and that this increased allowable growth will be funded by 2018 cash reserve levies. Thanks. And discussion?
So do we know what the total levy will be proposed, the cash reserve levy for?
We have a finance committee tomorrow, meeting tomorrow, and the finance committee will give us direction on that.
Okay, thank you.
So you better be there.
But basically, Michael, this is just allowing us to go before the SBRC to make sure that we can claim that in our, get authority to, to spend that.
Yeah, this is one of those opportunities that the district has to recapture authority that's spent for an environmental process. Removing asbestos is a required activity when we take down a building, so that's why they allow us to recoup the authority of that, the cost of that. And if you look on the next page on 34, you can see that it's a quite extensive list of different projects, invoices, the majority of, obviously, for Edison and Orange. So we don't have a lot of buildings left that we would need to do this to, and as you were stating before, that if we happened to sell one or use it for something else, that would be put off. But there are a couple more possibilities that would come under this program, but I think the next one is a couple years out yet.
Okay. All right. Anything further for Mr. Coughlin? I guess we'll have an interesting discussion tomorrow in finance, so. We're looking forward to it. Great. Then all those in favor of approving item J for the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, item K on page 35. It's the Budget Guarantee for the 2017-2018. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Directors of the Waterloo Community School District will levy property tax for fiscal year 2017-18 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 257.14 Code of Iowa.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion?
Michael, do you want to explain just a little bit about what it is?
I was like, hmm, maybe they. Just explain what the budget guarantee is for our viewers, please, because you'll do it a lot better than I will.
The budget formula is based on the foundational calculation of the cost per pupil assigned by the state and our enrollment. Currently, for the year that we're in, the cost per pupil was $6,591, and with the 1.11% increase, that went to $6,664. So if you take the cost per pupil, that $6,000 figure, times the enrollment, you get our regular program district costs, and I like to call it the foundational base of our budget. It's the base calculation of where our budget starts from. Now, if you've got an allowable growth, an SSA, a State Supplemental, um, cost per pupil going, state supplemental state aid, let me get that in the right direction, that goes up 1%, but the enrollment dropped almost 100 kids, that calculation is not going to go up 1%.
Right.
So the state formula allows that, um, the district, each district gets to backfill that difference to get at least a 1% increase. Now, the easy part is last year, we did qualify for that as well. So if you look on the second page, on page 36, in the middle column, um, our base calculation, 1% was $717,723. So if you look at this year's into 18, that 1% would be $720,000 on line J. But last year, we had to backfill part of that calculation with property tax, $412. So you have to take the 720 minus the 412, and really, in authority, we're only getting 307. Okay, that's the easy part of the understanding. The back, the backfill issue with completing that calculation, without going through all the messy details, last year, we levied an additional $412,000 to make our 1%. This year, that calculation would be $594,000. That gets add, added to our property tax askings, and that is on line N. And yes, we will look at all of that in our calculation of property tax askings for next year, and we can discuss that at the finance committee tomorrow.
So the guarantee is in authority, not state financial.
It's not, if you get the bump in one year, you don't get 1% above that bump, you get 1% against the base calculation.
Yeah.
So if you get a bump one, one year, the difference comes off of that in the second year. But then it clears itself in year three, and you start over again. So the whole issue is rather confusing, and you have to follow through every step of how your enrollment happens. If, if our enrollment would flatten out, that would take care of most of the issue, even with a 1% guarantee, or a 1% SSA, I'm sorry. Because your enrollment stays flat, a 1% will make you whole to a 1% growth. But if you're 1% and you drop 100 kids, you're not making a 1% growth. So you have to make up the difference in taxes.
Yeah, it is authority, it's authority, but it's also backfilled by property tax.
Property tax.
So it's not just authority. And I was just, I think at the 1.1%, they talked about, you know, well over half of Iowa's districts are on budget guarantee this year. Well over half, so.
Yeah.
Because, because of the, the amount of money, so it would be backfilled with property taxes in the majority of our districts.
Well, when you think you have a 1% guarantee and it only goes up 1.1, anybody that has decreased enrollment.
Right.
Yeah.
At all is going to fall into that.
Yeah, the rural schools with, I mean, they could do these five kids, and that would.
Yep, that's right. It would go on budget guarantee.
Yeah. It wouldn't take much, so there's so many small districts out there.
So this 0.43%, that's the, the net result, that's the increase.
In authority.
In authority.
It only goes, goes up 0.43% rather than the 1% because we got a, we got a bump last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's our real numbers, 0.43%.
Yes.
But we not only have, well, we have the authority, and that will be filled with property taxes.
Property taxes.
Okay. So the cash, the authority to tax comes with that.
Yes.
Okay.
But since it is a local, because that, that difference is backed purely by property tax, it's not shared by state aid. That's why it requires board action to say, you're taking local decision to actually levy that tax. Because in normal situations, it's 25% property tax, 75% state aid. And now this is 100% property tax.
Property tax.
But just for your reference, $600,000 is about 20 cents on the tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
And I do find it quite ironic that they're trying to remove more local control of boards, yet still on taxing issues, they allow the local boards control.
Yep. Well, we'll definitely be seeing this again.
Yes.
So, anything further for Michael? Lyle, do you have a question?
No, I was just, we'll cover it later, but the, the new rules or proposal to equalize, is that, that will eventually affect us. I assume we're in a category of a property poor district.
That's two different things.
Two different, yeah.
The cost per pupil, we are on the lower level, so when they do, if they do make the $5, $10, and we will see increases with that. What makes us a property poor district is that based on the number of kids we have, our property value so, is low, so our property value per student puts us below the state average.
Yeah.
That's why we're a property poor district.
And Mike, may, may I ask, what impact does decreased or declining enrollment, what impact will that have on our district?
That has the, the biggest effect, because really, whether you get 1%, 2%, or 4%, has some significant difference, but it, it pales in comparison of dropping 100 kids every year. So that's really the critical part of, of keeping the financial number steady. But then there's the argument on the other side, that if you're dropping 100 kids every year, eventually, you're going to be able to cut staff.
Correct. And so without getting political, the new bill that's going to be introduced and more than likely passed in Iowa State House, I, I hope that property owners and residents of Waterloo would really look at the impact that that bill will have on our declining enrollment and our ability to effectively serve our students and our public schools, not to take anything away from private schools, even though they'll be taking away from us.
That was a good note to end on, unless anybody else has anything further to add this evening? All right. Then all those in favor of approving item K, which is the Budget Guarantee for 2017-18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item L on page 37, and this is the Financial Audit. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education receive and place on file the 2015-16 District Financial Audit.
I did want to say that.
Hang on, I, somebody's got to, somebody's got to move, and somebody's got a second.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. Not meaning to cut you off, but okay. We got it? Okay, great. Motion's on the table, end discussion. Floor is yours, Mr. Coughlin. We're set.
I did want to say initially that I had, was working with the tech department to get the audit on the website before tonight's meeting, and all because of my fault, that didn't happen. But I have emailed that to all of you that didn't have it already. It will be in your email right now if you look at it, but it does give you a PDF file of the audit that was completed for 15-16. However, the, um, the finance committee, Sue and Shanley met with Dennis Myskins, who is the chief auditor at Hogan Hansen, to review the audit and any questions that they have. And I guess I would turn that over to them as far as any comments that you'd like to make.
Um, well, the first and foremost, the thing that stood out to me is we've always had glowing, really good audits, if that's, if that's a way to say, if you can say glowing an audit in the same sentence. But this one in particular stood out to me. Dennis was extremely complimentary to the finance office, Michael, and your staff, and he said it could not have been a smoother process. There were, there were no, you know, notices of, you know, he just said it was perfect. So it's hard to, it's hard to improve on being perfect, I guess.
And, and he was also very complimentary on the timeliness of getting things in, which is another benefit for the district. And also, one word that he used quite often in the audit and, and speaking with us was clean. Everything is so clean. And, and so I was, I was very proud of your department, Michael, for, and, and even involving some of your staff in the actual audit process, with Deb being there. I thought that was very good for people to hear that their work is very appreciated, and it's a great job. So I, one of the dings, which I thought was quite ironic, is they went down and, and they did mention that they had never, ever seen or experienced an audit to the extent of the not equal number of fruit snacks.
And goldfish.
And goldfish on a tray of a student. and goldfish on a tray of a student. And that was amazing to me that that would be something that we were dinged for.
Well, let me fill that in a little bit. Because audits are never perfect because you, auditors are paid to find things. But we were happy with the outcome that we had. Several of the comments that were at the end of the audit of saying here's things that they found and had to report and so on, tied into a food service audit that the state did. Totally different entity. And they came in last winter and they do everything from inventories to spot checking how many goldfish go on a kindergartner's plate. And when they found some discrepancies of food portions, that somehow is required to be addressed in the financial audit. So be it. That's what happens. And we had a minor, very minor correction on enrollment. And again, you think about 11,000 students and you're off one and a half students in all of the combinations, and we have to report that too. The other thing that was probably the most visible and widespread across the state was the comment about public purpose. And we've talked about that many times of saying, how are we going to function with fulfilling the public purpose of money that all kids are addressed rather than individuals in some cases? Some of those were accounts that were booster clubs or teacher courtesy accounts that needed to be moved to an agency fund rather than student activities. So there was some procedural things that we needed to do, but nothing that was out of line with understanding the new attention to those things that were a directive from the DE and the State Auditor's Office. So even within all of those issues that we had to address, all of them were understandable and certainly things that we can correct and go forward. So, but in the other side of it, I can't think of anything in particular. I don't want to say every number, but the majority of every financial position that the district has improved last year. Balances have become stronger. Percentages were more fulfilled and to goals. And that comes very much in the way of looking at our financial position and addressing it on the front end, rather than waiting for it to get to a position of panic or whatever. And actually with, even with the 1.1 percent increase this year, we're still in very good financial condition because of the last couple of years that we've addressed this. So we've got a lot of options and opportunities to continue to shape the budget to do what we need to for the delivery system for the students. So we're sitting in a pretty good position right now, even with this. So it's just something we have to keep a good balance.
So was the issue from last year where they dropped that charge for IPRs shortfall at the state level onto the food service?
Food service, we made, well, we knew, kind of knew what we were looking for this year. Last year, we didn't even know what that number was until the books were closed. So we couldn't make any adjustment to it. Food service by its nature cannot go negative. Because it's an enterprise fund, so it has to support itself. So when the state came in last year and put that adjustment in there and put us negative, there was no way to adjust to it. This year, we knew what that number, in the vicinity of what that number was going to be, so we could make the appropriate adjustments. Now, food service never, shouldn't say always and shouldn't say never, but the food service does not usually support itself entirely. There's a percentage, there's a proration that we can charge to food service for overhead, indirect costs. We are not able to charge all of that. It would put them negative. So we do enough to meet the criteria of what we can, what they can afford to handle. And it's something that we have to balance with labor and costs and food prices and all of the things that we have for options for the food service. But it's something that we continually look at to try to balance the financial health of that program.
So that reserve to cover the underfunding of IPRs, that's not money we pay to anybody?
No, it's just, it's a liability that's named of saying this is what could happen if the actuarial percentages that they've chosen is satisfied. And we don't know that except one year to the next of when people retire and how many stay in the system and so on. So that actuarial number projection changes every year.
I think in the official IPRs documents, they reduce the anticipated percentage of gain each year from like seven down to five or something, didn't they?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that number offhand. It's still, it is still rated as one of the strongest retirement systems in the nation. So from that point, we can be very thankful. But as the markets fluctuate and really, you know, as you know with investments, they don't, their investments are not based on one to five years to 10. They're 30 and 40 years out. So they've got a strong basis of returns built into that system.
I thought you still had more. Is that it?
I'm done.
Anybody else have anything? All right, Michael, so I'm going to amend what I said, and I won't say perfect. You're not supposed to say perfect about an audit. But I'll say, how about two thumbs up and clean? And lastly, I do want to say also, I always appreciate the fact that we as board members get time by ourselves with the auditor where there's no one from the district present. And I think that is really, really key. I think, Lyle, you can speak to that too. Every year, we have the ability to ask him pretty much anything. And again, that always comes, that has come back very positive.
And I think it's a testament from our side as well that this is an audit firm that will tell you anything you ask.
Yes.
And if there's a couple of different ways to look at it, he will tell you that. That's the kind of relationship we work with all year with them. That anything that comes up, we can put it in front of them and get three or four different, we can hammer out some possibilities and then come up with something that fits everybody's requirements. So we feel good about that as well.
It's nice that you can have a working relationship during the year to be able to discuss those things so that you're not caught at the end of the year with an issue.
Right.
Makes a big difference. So for those of you who haven't seen it, a little light reading for this evening before you go to bed. It's only a couple, yeah, the audit. It's really, it's awesome. So, all right, is there anything further then on the audit? All right, seeing none, then I would entertain all those in favor of approving the 2015-2016 district financial audit. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes the action items on our agenda tonight. And that takes us then to item M, which is for information only. It is on page 42. Again, these are financial information. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Coughlin for a little bit more.
This is another round of the monthly financial reports that, again, we have set these up in a structure so you can look from month to month what is going on in all of these different formats. The first few pages, starting on 43, is the bank balances in each of the different funds by month. And you can see at the bottom of each month, the ending balance of the cash that's actually in the bank at the end of the month on each one of those months. So going to the revenue, then if you get into where's the money coming from, starting on page 47, starts with the general fund and then goes through all the other funds. And it shows where all of the money comes from by month, whether it's a local source, a state source, federal money. And then gets into the activity accounts and PEPAL accounts, bond, debt service, and so on. And on page 50 is the food service account. I will say that at this particular point, everything is where we expect for halfway through the year. So we don't have anything that looks like a surprise to this point. So it appears that we will be ending the fiscal year again in solid financial footing. We'll talk about that a little bit again tomorrow. The, and I will say that we don't have a meeting on the 13th, but we do have one on the 27th of March. And that will be, that will be my annual look at the condition of the district and then what we're expecting for expenditures out of 17-18 in all the different funds and the proposed tax rate and how that will affect property taxes. So then that will be discussed on the 27th and then published. And then on April 10th, is that a Monday? That will then be, there'll be a hearing for the published budget to certify the tax rate and the total of expenditures. And then that is due to the county auditor, usually on the 15th, but that's a Saturday. So it'll be April 17th that that will be turned in. So there will be a lot of financial activity between now and when that rate is approved on April 10th.
April 17th is National Emancipation Day, so will they be open to receive it? Will it be the 18th? Because that's why federal taxes aren't due till the 18th now.
Hmm, no, I hadn't heard that. Because they've been publishing the 17th. Most of it we do by electronic transfer, except for a couple of paper copies that go to our county office, the county auditor. So that would be the only thing that may be interrupted by that. So the state will have all of our records before then. And I guess if we approve it on the 10th, I can get it to it before then. So we won't have to worry about it.
We'll have seven days.
Yeah, okay.
No worries, Michael.
Okay, very good. Starting on page 51 then is all of the detail of the object codes in the general fund of where the expenses are by month. You can see what the budget is and how much of the budget we've spent to this point. And it roughly should be, for the things that are predictable, the salaried benefits, about 50 percent. And the rest of it runs basically by the activity of the year, such as they buy a lot of supplies at the beginning of the school year. So those might be mostly spent. But then you've got utilities that we're paying for, well, in most years, we're paying for heating bills. I don't think we've had the air on this year, so.
Close.
So that's also another recognized, going to be another recognized saving for the district in expenditures this year is our heating costs. But...
Do you happen to know, on page 53, the natural gas, the budget has much increased from last year from 317,000 to 565,000. But the year-to-date is only 59,000, so...
We just got our first main heating bill, that 59,000. Now, the other point of the 317 was not the budget of that year, it was the actual. So if you'd go back a year and look at the budget, it was probably around 500,000. And we had a good winter last year, too.
Yeah, okay.
So you can't skimp on the current year because last year was good. So we are, you always have to show conservative numbers in your utilities. So that's why it's going, and it will look good again this year unless we get a Arctic blast for the next two months. But we've had good use of natural gas. And actually, it's not as volatile as it used to be, as you well know with geothermal. Because we're not hitting our natural gas as heavy as the old buildings were. You know, because we've got our heat source from the earth that's keeping it constant. So, but in my office, I like to be conservative with that number until we see it, so.
I do that at my house, too. My heat's been on a bunch of years.
So when you have the extra at the end of the year in that account, does that carry over or where does that go?
All of the money that's left over goes into the unspent balance. It's one big number. It's then used to allocate into the next year. So we don't hold just in all of those. You would see how many little individual accounts we would have by looking at this. It would be unmanageable. We have enough challenge of saying we've got special ed, tag, talented, you know, Title I and all of these that we do have to keep in individual accounts. So some of the other ones would be really difficult. And then the easiest to look at, at the end on page 58, is the graphs of our cash flow. And you can look over to the tables on the right and see that, like the general fund, we're about 6 million ahead of last year at this point in time. The management fund is about the same. That's the property liability insurance and workers' comp. So that hasn't seen much of a change in the last year's. The sales tax fund, because we haven't had any projects this year so far, the balance is starting to build now, which is a good indication. The PEPAL fund is lower than a year ago. But the action you took tonight of the asbestos fund, that's going to be added back to PEPAL because that's where it was taken out originally. But since we need money in PEPAL, that's why it was transferred into the general fund. And that's not going to have much of an effect on the general fund, but that will kick up some possibilities with PEPAL that we can then use. So you'll see a bump, you'll see a jump up of half a million dollars in the next month in PEPAL. So that's what I was saying, as receipts and expenditures are going through this part of the year, you can really see how we compare to last year and that we're showing a little bit better health than we were even a year ago. But much challenges on the horizon.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyone have anything further for Michael? I always appreciate, Michael, that you find a way to explain this in layman's terms so that everybody can understand it. It's pretty complicated, so I really do appreciate having this information, so. All right. I will then move on to Dr. Lindeman to your superintendent's report.
Didn't mean to...
No, I was in the back of the book and I need to be at the front. I guess just a few comments. The first one is the same as the first one last month, that the last meeting was just the legislative update. And I just encourage the public and certainly the school board to continue to watch the legislation and what's happening. On Friday, it is known as funnel week. And that's kind of, it marks a date when... when anything that's gonna come forward needs to come forward by Friday. Now, that's mostly true, although there are some, there's a couple of parameters that appropriations bills don't have to be out by Friday because they wait, you know, to appropriate things, the amount of money they're gonna tag to things that happens a little bit later, and, and sometimes the legislators will tag some bill onto appropriations when they, when they allocate the money. But anyway, just, I, I encourage everybody to continue to watch what's going on. If you go to the Iowa legislation website, there's a great link that just says, you know, the bills that have been introduced this week, I click on it, actually, you can look at it daily or weekly, and I look at it every day just to find out what's, what's happening because it's important. It's not, it's not only important if you're superintendent, it's just important if you are, you know, a supporter of, of, you know, children in schools and, and a variety of things. So, um, the next one is just kind of a fun thing, the, the East High Swing Show is this weekend, and maybe somebody else was gonna mention it, but, um, on Friday and Saturday night at 7 o'clock, cost is $6. It's always an amazing event, I'm just shocked at the talent, and, um, usually one of, I think a fun thing is usually the, the staff has one or two acts that they do along with the kids, and sometimes it's simultaneously, but I, my whole family's gonna go to that, and it's always a great event. So, um, I think everyone knows that spring break is coming up, March 13th through 17th, and, um, I would just remind our public that this office does remain open. Sometimes we have people who are trying to get in, you know, a couple vacation days here and there, but, um, you know, if you call, you can always get, get somebody here at the central office and, um, so, um, but the buildings are typically closed during that time, so. Conferences, making a comment, last week, we had parent-teacher conferences, and, um, I have not gotten the numbers yet to find out how many people came and how many people didn't come, those will be coming in shortly, but parents, if you have not come to conferences, there is still time. Matter of fact, we leave that window open for, you know, up to three weeks afterwards, we're still contacting parents and asking them to come. It's really important, I mean, I'm speaking as a parent, and, and, um, when I go, I get an opportunity to see what my kids have been learning, what we can work on at home, um, just generally how things are going, so they are really, really important, and so I, I appreciate, I know they are really long days for our, our staff, I remember that actually as a teacher, you would think that, you know, that, that's less, um, energy, but actually it's not. It takes more energy to do parent-teacher conferences, so. Um, and then, uh, I appreciated, uh, last month, or at our last meeting, we had a, an update on PACE, and we, the PACE is our strategic plan, which actually it's up here. At our next meeting, which, since there's only one in, in March, at the next one, we will be tackling the A for Achievement, getting an update from, from, uh, Dr. McNulty and his team on some of the things that we're doing actually in the, the achievement area with math and science and reading and, and, um, 21st century things. So, that will be coming up, uh, end of, um, March. And then my last one is just a really odd comment, um, it doesn't necessarily have so much to do with, with Waterloo schools, but today I had the opportunity, I was at Rotary, and the topic was so interesting that I'm just gonna give people food for thought. It was, uh, they had a speaker who is a professor from Hawkeye Community College, and he spoke on global agriculture. And at first, I was thinking, okay, I'm, you know, I'm a farm girl, I thought maybe that would be interesting, but I didn't really know, but it was absolutely fascinating. And, um, one of the things that he had mentioned in there, he was talking about farming and all of the technical positions that are available in the area of agriculture. And so, while we have tackled career and technical education, and, and I think everyone knows, uh, the, the areas that we're pursuing, two last year and, and three more this year, we haven't necessarily tackled agriculture, but, uh, however, I, I kinda left with a new appreciation for thinking, you know, we probably might wanna look at that just because all of the things, um, this is the meeting every year where they have the, the Rotary, the downtown Rotary invites area farmers to come in, and so the room was completely filled with, you know, 100 to 150 people, and many of them were farmers, and I happened to sit at a table where there were eight people, and three of us were Rotarians, and five people were farmers from the area. And just to listen to them talk, and if you think, uh, education has a lot of acronyms, try farming. Try farming. It was absolute, they were talking about words I have not ever heard of, and so I've got some work to do tonight if I can remember what they were, but it was just a fascinating area. And so, you know, when we, when we talk about career and technical education, it really does permeate every area, and, and agriculture is, is certainly one of them, so that was my new learning for the day. Thank you.
Turned my mic off. All right, I'm gonna start, we'll do board comments, I'll start with Lyle. I do not. Okay, all right, timeout. All right. Put a, put a, put a bookmark in it. Go, Jessie.
Oh, I get you all.
I swear that he does not, but okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, sitting right in Rob here.
You can sit in this chair anytime.
Okay, let's see. Pretty things. See, I was, uh, at Bunker today for Engineering Week, had a good visit there, two classes, where you see kid engagement, always fun to see middle school kids how they act, so, and, uh, so good to visit there. Uh, two, just a, uh, we do have NIBA coming up this week, this Saturday, at high school and middle school, so for NIBA Jazz, and be correct on that, so that's coming up. And then, just a congratulatory to our, uh, we had two, um, state players at the State Wrestling Tournament.
Yes.
Uh, Tyra Gordon East finished fourth at 182, and Sam Gers finished fifth at 220, so nice to see them on the podium, always a special moment there.
That's great. Thanks, Jessie. And I'm sorry, I promise you that I'm gonna, I don't know what I'm gonna have to do, tattoo my hand or something, so. All righty, Angie. Yeah, I need a flip. What I need to do is like put a, yeah, the possession arrow.
I don't, I don't really have anything big. Except for, I did watch the Oscars last night, and the thing, and you think that that doesn't tie to education, but it, it totally did because there was one gentleman who, who credited his public school education for making him be able to have the arts and how important that is and how public education afforded him the opportunities to be able to be in music, so, I mean, he, his was music. There was another gentleman there, like, we, the, the kids came in and talked about dreaming, all I could think about is, there was a, uh, the youngest person ever to win an Oscar, won an Oscar last night, and he was 32, so if you think you gotta wait till you're older to be pursuing your dreams, that, that is false. Um, another gentleman, um, the best film, again, that won last night, uh, I can't remember the name of it, dang it.
Moonlight.
Moonlight, thank you. Moonlight, and the, and there were two, two young gentlemen, they also talked about how they grew up in public school education in Florida, and that they were friends and that they had this dream since they were in high school and had been working on it, and, I mean, I just, the things that you are doing now are important and can shape your life forever, and the Oscars just reminded me of that, and so, as the kids said, they were talking about their dreams, make sure that you are working towards your dreams and fulfilling them, so that's all.
Thanks, Angie.
I got one question, though. If we could say also then, when is, um, not kindergarten roundup, but registration for kindergarten is in that in March?
Pre-K, yeah, preschool, uh, yeah, kindergarten, kinder, kindergarten registration is March 30th and March 31st, and so, thank you for, for reminding, and we have sent out lots of date cards, too, but, um, and that will be here in this building, and so, if you have a kindergartner, please, 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 an upcoming kindergartner, an upcoming kindergartner next year, please come in and get them registered. There will be a roundup that will happen in your, your, uh, your child's boundary school, and that will be later, I believe it's April 28th-ish, I think it's April 28th, but this is just to get all the paperwork done, the registration, and we've split them up this year, um, several districts have done that, and they have really gotten, uh, excellent comments from parents, so that's what we're doing, but thanks, Angela.
Thanks, Sue.
I just wanted to congratulate the bowling teams of both East and West, um, very fine showing down at the state tournament. I know the West boys, I think, finished fourth, and the, um, they're, they're in different classes, um, East is in 2A and West in 3A for the bowling, so they both got to go and, and, um, just did as well, and, uh, couple made All-State, I know from East High, Leah Frost, and there was some Abby Fangman, I believe, from West, so there was, um, some real good bowlers, so we have a good crowd there, and a lot of, um, fan support went down for that, too. And also, I just wanted to, um, encourage kids that, um, you've just had your conferences, and now you've been told to work on, so, um, you still have three months left to finish strong.
Perfect. Rhonda?
Uh, yes, two things, I wanted to say how much fun I had with the Orange Elementary Kids. Uh, last week, we did a Black History Month read-in, and Tara was there, and it was really great reading to the young people, and I want to commend Principal Sunny Hart, her, her students were, were excellent, and the teachers were very welcoming, and I just wanna thank them, and it was, it was a lot of fun, and we donated some books, um, afterwards. And I also want to say thank you to the children's literature class at Hawkeye Community College for volunteering to, to read as well, so thank you. Uh, second thing, uh, Dr. Lindeman, I found out, I was, um, having lunch with a friend who was getting her PhD in sociology at Iowa State, and there is a, uh, an agriculture, it's called Agriculture and Society, so I didn't think about sociology and agriculture, but I just wanna read briefly that, uh, the purpose of it is to, uh, prepare students to become leaders in addressing complex issues related to the social and human dimensions of agriculture at both the local and global level. So, when you talk about agriculture, that made me think about, I learned something new, so for those of you who wanna go into ag or go into sociology, you can combine both of them and make a career in it.
I have a cousin who has a, her husband has a PhD in rural sociology.
That's what it's called, rural sociology. So, you're welcome.
Thanks. Mike?
I, uh, don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Lyle, you've had plenty of time to get the notes down.
Continuing on the ag theme, the, uh, Farm Show starts tomorrow at the Unidome, the Ag and, uh, exposition, uh, one of the things that's just amazing is the, the precision planning, not only is the road guidance there, but say you're planting, you know, 35,000 kernels an acre, it monitors every single one and it tells you how many skips and how many missing, I mean, it's, it's really just fantastic the way that equipment operates, and it, it's not easy to operate, I mean, I couldn't run a planner these days. Yeah, more and more so. So, uh, I move that we include agriculture and animal science in the CTP, CTE program this fall.
Do I have a second?
I, I have a daughter that was seconded out on animal science, so.
We really, we may need to revisit.
It was, it was really a fascinating, um, a presentation, and I, I cannot think of the, the man's name, he was a, a professor at, at a young, young gentleman, I think, from Hawkeye, and it was fascinating to hear comparing topsoil from Denmark to Haiti and what they've learned about erosion and, it was fascinating.
Well, on that note, then, you know, since we only have one more day left in the month of February, and thus Black History Month, uh, shout out to George Washington Carver, so there's that Iowa connection to agriculture and, you know.
Peanuts.
Right, that's right, so.
All right, is that it, Lyle?
That's it.
Okay. I just have a few quick, a few quick things. I wanna also, uh, congratulate the West High Improv Group, uh, that went down to All-State a week ago Saturday, they brought home the banner in improv, which is a huge deal, they haven't brought a banner home in a couple of years, so you can see that on display up at the school. Um, and then I also just want to say how excited I am for our kiddos who get to do over spring break, um, the commitment to the arts in this, uh, district that's so important, but we have a, a fine arts trip that's happening, both East and West High students in choir, in orchestra, and band are going, they're, they're on a bus for a long time, but they're going down to Orlando to spend five days, and they're gonna spend time, um, they're gonna perform on Main Street at Disney, they're gonna spend time with, um, sound engineers and on sound sets, and I just think it's a great opportunity for our kids to get to do something, a lot of them had to fundraise a long time to get this plan, um, it's been three years since they've gone to Orlando, and so, they're gonna be heading out a week from Sunday, so, uh, send them all safely down there and back, but I think it's a really cool thing that they get to have that opportunity, so. The next meeting, the next time we'll be here, just as one more reminder that we do not meet, uh, in the 13th of March, because it is during spring break, we will be meeting then on March 27th, and seeing nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Good night, thank you.